Good evening, if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We will, I have no report this evening, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, thank you David. Any questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Motion passes. All right, we will move on, and my computer just freeze up. And one click, thank you. We will move on to the reports of the committees and liaisons, so we'll start with MASEC.
So there's not all that much to cover this week, as it's only one week left before our much-needed and much-desired holiday break. We have a strings concert tomorrow night, and there's a rehearsal night, which is where Michelle is. They'll be joined by the band and the chorus for songs including "Hallelujah" and "Messiah Chorus." Matthew Hurley is the Rotary Student of the Month, and he will be honored at this week's Rotary. Winter sports have started up and are going well. Boys' basketball has their first game tomorrow night at 7:00. Girls' basketball has beaten one of the top teams in the state in the past week. And boys' hockey and girls' hockey are both going well, from what I've heard. And indoor track has meets in the coming weeks.
This weekend, we have an advisory from, a presentation from J.C. Goode, who is a returning speaker. It's about distracted driving, taxiing and driving. She was seriously injured in an accident where a person was distracted driving and hit her car and killed both of her parents, and she's, again, she's seriously injured, and she's coming to talk to us. Also, I'd like to mention, on January 7th, the newly-founded Polar Plunge Club has an event where we will be plunging into the Southport Beach at 8:45 a.m., which is a Saturday. And this is all to support Mr. Castillo's wife, Darlene, who was recently diagnosed with late-stage colon cancer. And the founder, Ryan Hatzka, his father has done a lot of work with the Polar Plunge and has been able to raise money for numerous occasions, like ill children, tsunami survivors, wounded soldiers, and even Sandy Hook. And so, we hope to do the same for Mr. Castillo.
Great, thank you. And we're gonna go into budgets in a little while, so if you want to take off, you feel free. Does anybody else have any other committee reports? Alan?
Yeah, the curriculum committee, Matt, and Ian Lowell, and Jim Stauskas.
Okay, great. Anybody else with committee reports? I'll let Carlos, do you have a committee report tonight?
A committee report?
All right, then we will move on.
Perfect timing, huh?
Perfect timing. We will move on to public participation, if anybody would like to speak. All right, hearing none. We will move on to the report of the superintendent.
I'm gonna take these in reverse order, so I'm gonna first take a look at the fund activity statement. Gabby could not be here this evening, so I'm covering for that. In insurance, through November 2016, our claims were 3.386 million, as compared to claims of 2.243, same period last year. There are currently three claimants that have met stop-loss this year, and nine claimants over $50,000 at this point. This compares to one claimant meeting stop-loss through 2015, and five claimants over $50,000 for the previous year. So, you can see that the amount of money flowing out is vastly different this year versus last year. We continue to monitor spending. I will likely be putting into place a freeze on all spending after the holidays, as we anticipate that our medical costs are gonna be about, if the trends were to continue exactly as they are now through the end of the year, we'd be about $400,000 in the hole. And then, as you know, we have special education costs that are already in excess of what we budgeted last year, so I think it would be the prudent thing for us to just freeze the budget and only take emergency expenditures at this point. The graph on page 19 is somewhat, gives you some relief that claims for the month of November were way down, in fact, lower than anything in the past year and a half. So, you know, maybe things will settle down on the medical front. With budget, I put in everybody's place, last time we met regarding the budget, it was a question about how do we compare this year and last year to other towns across the state of Connecticut? This is a compilation of approved expenditures for those two years. It's columns A, I'm sorry, columns B and E are really the only two that are important. Those are the final approved budgets for all of the towns. So if you look down here, you can see that there's quite a bit of variability, but there's quite a few numbers in the 3, 4, 5, some in excess of 5 percent increases across the state of Connecticut. I think the average, let me get to that, the average in '15, '16 was 1.91, and the average in '16, '17 was 1.43. But again, you had a wide range, anything from 0 to sometimes in excess of 5 or 6 percent. What it tells me is that depending on where the district is, you know, in their planning, in their purchases, in their medical expenditures, you could, you know, experience these wide fluctuations and percentage increases. Any questions on that?
A lot of information, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's somewhat helpful. We respond to this as throughout the course of the budget season. We haven't even gotten the inquiry yet for this year, because we're so early in the season, and we're so far into it already. Usually after the holidays, you'll start getting what people are doing for this year. As soon as I know that information, you know, every time I get an updated version of it, I'll bring it to a board meeting, so that you guys can see what the other towns are doing across the state.
That's very helpful.
Yeah, okay, great. So, the budget, here we are, we're still at 3.47. I anticipate a couple more retirements, but I won't know them for sure until probably the end of the week, and possibly even to next week. They don't have to notify us until December 31st, right John? You know, so, like I said, we do anticipate a couple, and we'll make some small savings there. We continue to scrutinize the special education budget. We think we found a little bit of money that we can perhaps pull out of that budget for next year, but it really won't matter much in terms of the overall percentage of the budget when we come back for your approval after the holidays, or your adoption of a budget. I won't be, I can guarantee you, it will not be under 3 percent at that point, unless we decide, as you decide as a board, that you want to make, you know, some kind of cuts in staffing or something like that prior to the adoption of the budget. So, I think that I'll just open it up to questions or comments about the budget, and let's see if we can muddle through it as best we can without Gabby here. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
What did you have on the agenda tonight to cover?
No, we've covered all the different topics, really.
Okay.
So, we're good on all of the coverage. I mean, if you want to look through the variance pages of any of the specific items, if there's any questions there that are unclear, I'll be happy to review them with you.
What was the percentage that you stated last Monday? What was the amount, as of right now, what would it be?
3.47.
3.47.
Was that where we started?
Yeah, yeah.
What are the biggest drivers?
Well, there are four primary drivers. There's a $600,000 increase in the medical, and I think from the brief discussion that we had here earlier tonight, the cost of procedures is through the roof. We have lived within the constraints of the agreement between the Board of Finance and us to reduce our medical reserve. That has helped us tremendously over the past three years, in terms of our overall percent increases and budget increases in the medical line item in particular. But, there comes a time when that just isn't covered anymore, okay? And so, with less employees and less overall numbers of uses of medical, our cost has gone up dramatically. So, we expect $600,000 there. The other drivers, transportation, and let me get to the page here in the overall, so I don't misstate any of the numbers. Our overall contract obligations and salaries is up 2.53 percent, for a total of $884,000 in round numbers. The medical insurance is up 600, as I just said. Special education is up about $388,000, that Kay reviewed with you last week. And transportation is up $209,000. So, when you look at the pie charts in previous years, we've actually shrunk in most other areas. These four areas now vastly exceed and really explain, almost in total, the increase.
I have a question on page 7-4, which is under staff summary. For Stephanie, we're anticipating a reduction of 26 students in our kindergarten level, but our staffing is still the same of four teachers. Is that, are we just trying to hold that, because we think there may be more, or, because if you average that out, we're looking at 11 kids a class?
We have four sections.
We're projecting a 49 kids.
No, we're anticipating...
We're anticipating going from 75 this year to 49 next year.
Yeah, John, do you remember this number?
I remember the conversation, we felt that the projection for the kindergarten from Maloney-McBroom was really low, and nothing we experienced, so we couldn't really figure out why they did it that way. So, we were really nervous about cutting that.
Okay.
It might come to be that, but based on this year's increases, we didn't think that that would be true.
Can I ask the principal, though? He's got his hand up.
Yeah. Bruce?
Yeah. Two years ago was the aberration, when we only had 51 kindergarten students. That group is now matriculated up to first grade, so we were low in first grade. This past year, we have 76 kindergartners. So, before that, we had four sections every year. And again, I know Maloney-McBroom's numbers, but we'll know more come February, March, but based upon the numbers we got in last year, plus the numbers that we got in over the summer, including number of kindergartners, I think keeping four staff members would be prudent.
And you know, in the past, when we underestimated class size, we've, I've come to you and we've added kindergarten staff, we would do exactly the reverse if we had a shrinkage problem like that. Where we would shed a teacher at that point.
Just because that would be a big red flag.
Right.
Yep.
Moving on.
On page 10-2, can you tell me why it looks like we're losing $150,000 in grant money? Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Adding 150.
No, you're adding 150.
You're adding on?
Yeah. Yeah, a negative would show in parentheses.
Gotcha, thanks.
Yep. And again, we don't have confirmation on a lot of that, too. Anything can happen here.
I mean, the enrollment that I think was eye-opening was on Monday, when we heard from the special education department, because those costs can definitely be significant. And they are significant in regards to what's being projected, but we don't know yet, obviously, until we're ready for the new year, and so, from now until, obviously, July, August.
Right.
But, yeah, so...
It's, you know, it's hard, when you look at the enrollment and the executive summary, that histogram chart, let me pull up the right page for you on that. I believe it, yeah, it's on, it's not labeled as a page number, it's this one here.
Page 13, it's in the little circle in the top.
Oh, I got it, okay, page 13, that little circle at the top, right above the crescendo there on the upper. When you look at the '15, '16, and '17 years there, you know, you do see that leveling off, and Maloney-McBroom is now saying that there is a trend happening here, that Fairfield County is gonna start bumping up again, okay? At the worst, it's gonna stay level and probably bump up some, so, that's why, that's a wild card, we're just not, we just can't say for sure what that's gonna look like. We'll know, Deb, when do we really have a good handle on kindergarten enrollment, for instance? By May, April?
Yeah, I would say April, May. You know, we do our, kind of our orientation in February, but we don't really have a sense until probably by May.
Yeah.
It's all summer, right?
Right, and then we have, and we have the move-ins all summer, and, so Bruce, you picked up a bunch of kids over the summer that were...
Yeah, about 40, I think.
Right.
They have Greed Oak Farm, Northbrook, and Hills of Monroe, all feeded to Stephanie Elementary, where as realtors, we see a lot of transactions occurring all the time. I would think, I would be very surprised if Maloney-McBroom's numbers are correct for Stephanie's kindergarten predictions for this upcoming school year, I'd be shocked.
I agree.
Same here.
Yeah. I mean, something you really can't predict, there's no math formula that's gonna...
I mean, when it was ticking down steadily, year to year, that seemed, you know, we were on a pretty predictable trend there, about 100, 115 kids a year.
Yep. Their numbers were pretty dead-on.
Yeah, yeah, but now, there's this unknown here, so I'm reluctant to do too much with staffing until I have a better feel.
Does anybody else have any questions on budget?
Is 600,000 going into the medical, right, 600,000 increase? Where does that position us going forward?
John, you're gonna have to help me on this. I think that Jay was talking about that being a minimum amount that we need to put into the fund, you know, into our line item there, to cover what's happening with the trending upward in the medical costs.
It won't bring us above the 18 percent.
Right.
18 to 22, it's the low end of the...
That's the 18, that's 18?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's his prediction, you know, based on the increase. And we're gonna see an increase in the premiums per month, double-digit increase, which is the first time we've seen that in a few years. We've been pretty steady, but he's pretty comfortable saying it's gonna be a double percent increase for the employees.
And the Board of Finance did take action, and they did set up the reserve medical to the $200,000, $500,000 to backstop us in the event that we run that reserve down too low.
Right, 'cause our reserve balance is at 680, I think, right now?
Yeah, yeah, which has shown a little bit of improvement because of November, but...
It is, and if November was consistent with the other months, we would be close to zero.
I did have a conversation with Mike Manjos, you know, if there was anything creative that we can do, you know, maybe a lease agreement with the town on some item, like we did a couple of years ago. He was open to that, but he was unsure of what we could possibly do at this point as well, so, you know, that's another watch, wait-and-see situation.
My guess is that won't play out until they get their budget and get into their review of it, so probably not till end of February, March, for that type of stuff, if there's anything there.
I mean, as I always say, the problem that we're up against is we're so early out in coming to your adoption of a budget, that it's hard to make solid predictions. We're just too far away from when, you know, Jay at Ovation is reluctant to give you a number. He gave us the 600,000 number, you know, could it be $100,000 too low? Could it be $50,000 too high? We'll know better in February. We won't know it, you know, until then, with any kind of certainty. I mean, what you've come to expect of us, in terms of budget, has always been, in the past, you know, half of the five years or so, has been that we will peel back every penny of savings that we can peel back along the way throughout January and February. And we make the same promise to do the same, again, this year, like any other year. The minute we know that we can save some funds, whether it's $10 or, you know, $100,000, we'll come to you and tell you that we're in a position, if you'd like to adjust the budget, we can adjust it up or down from that point on. So, I see the adoption in January as a starting point, and like I say, I do anticipate some retirements, I do anticipate some savings in special education. Can there be further reduction in staff or some feature like that? I would say there's the possibility for that, but I'm hesitant to go there at this particular time.
And also, the state could decrease funding.
That is a very, I mean, I said that last Monday, when John and I went to the meeting. The legislators that were at the legislative breakfast made it very, very clear to all the superintendents and board chairs in that room, that the state is broke, and they have no money, and to expect very significant reductions in municipal aid and funding. So, that would be excess cost grants, that would be education cost sharing.
Transportation.
Transportation, that would be on the town side, whatever they get to the town. They did not quantify us with specific numbers, but they said, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, expect very significant reductions to revenue, to back to the town.
When will they let us know that? For the next school year?
End of the session.
End of the session, which is not until June.
Wow.
So, we could be, we could have an approved budget, based on these assumptions, and then find out, as a lot of towns did last year, down county towns, where they had two, $3 million reductions in their funding, and already had approved budgets and needed to find $3 million. On the plus side, we don't get as much as a lot of other places, you know, so a hit is still a hit, you know, but, you know, we don't know what that is.
We had a reserve in the past for special education that we didn't have this past year, but in the past, you had it, correct?
We had a contingency.
We put a $50,000, $50,000, there is no contingency built into this budget.
Even with the very real...
Right.
...possibility of the state decreasing the funds.
Right.
That's scary.
Yeah.
When we're at the 3.47 mark, it's hard for me to put something in like that.
Yeah.
Alan?
Jim, in terms of staffing, how are we with, like, paraprofessionals across the district?
Well, last year, we made some inroads in reduction in staff and paraprofessionals. As I said, now, just about every, I think every union, every group of employees has lost staff over the past several years, so there's no one that's been immune to the reduction in force that we've had going on. So, you know, we have situations now where we have some one-on-one paraprofessionals, we have, we're seeing a fairly significant uptick in some emotional and behavioral issues at the lower-grade levels, where it would be imprudent of us not to have a one-on-one paraprofessional with some of the kids, so, okay, I mean, I'm saying exactly what you're saying to me every day, aren't I?
You're doing well.
It only took her 10 times to repeat it to me. But yeah, we are, you know, we're being careful here, because, you know, we end up, when you have a behavioral issue, and this could be any grade level, you have a behavioral issue where a child strikes out at a paraprofessional or a teacher, you could be, you could have a work comp claim for weeks and months, you know, we're not immune to that. We have that happening in our schools, and so, you know, we need to always exercise the prudent amount of supervision and care for kids that might be exhibiting those kinds of behaviors.
I was kind of wondering about non-special ed paras.
We don't have a lot of non-special ed paras. John, I mean, do you have a number on the top of your head? It's, I mean, we have some recess paras here and there.
We have library paras, no, I'm sorry, technology paras. So, the elementary technology classrooms are, labs are staffed by technology paras. So, there's three of those, and there's probably four 15-hour recess paras.
Other than that, they're all special education paras.
Everybody's good to move on at this point? Well, we will revisit this on our first meeting in January, for any final questions and review, and then vote on the budget, and if Jim has some adjustments at that particular time, then he will bring them forth, and then we will decide on the budget to move forward to the first selectment of that meeting. All right. We will go move on, and Jim, I take it you're done on superintendent?
I am, yep.
Okay. We will move on to MASEC parking fees. We had a few meetings ago, a proposal to reduce the MASEC parking fee from 125 to 100, and just as background for everybody, we have in front of us our district reference group, and what the other towns are charging, and also the Southwest Conference on the other side. And just for anybody who's new, for which would be David, we did for this particular incoming school year, reduce the parking rate, which was, we were at 150 last year, and we reduced that to 125 for this school year forward. So, we've already reduced that. So, the question is on the table as to whether we want to leave the parking fee as is at 125, or do we want to entertain reducing that yet again?
When was the last time we looked at it, sorry?
We reduced it for this school year.
This school year, okay.
We were at 150 last school year, for this school year, starting 2016, '17, we had reduced it to 125 for the year. Alan?
You said at the last meeting, all these towns also have pay-to-play sports?
Uh huh. Yeah, I think that's pretty common nowadays for most towns, correct, Jim?
Yes.
That they all have paid-for-play in some form.
In my opinion, I'm comfortable with leaving it where it is for now, 125, and seeing where we're at over the summer, possibly reducing it for the next school year, if the budget allows us to.
Right. Yeah, 'cause a lot can change, 'cause these fees are really used for maintenance and upkeep of this parking lot. And we can certainly do that table that, too, when we, where we know where we stand budget-wise. And Alan?
Do we know when we started instituting fees for parking?
John, you would have a better collective memory here.
I started here in, uh, I think it, I, I can't even remember not, not having parking fee.
I graduated nineteen seventy-five and we had to pay from MASC.
Yeah, so I can't, yeah, I don't, we remember.
There you go. Pretty seventy-five.
Remember how much you had to pay?
It was like ten bucks, but we still had to pay.
Inflation.
But Kate's out there, just remember something, for a hundred bucks you could buy a pretty good used car.
Joe, did you pay too?
So every year we use these fees only for the parking lot?
Yes.
What are some of the things?
Well, they, all the, uh, you know, crack ceiling, uh, striping. Uh, this year, I think we tapped into this fund significantly on that sidewalk that comes out of the junior lot and the staircase through the, the elevation change out here. There's always, there's never enough to do all of the work that we need to do.
And in the past, we purchased land to increase the parking area and we paid back the town from that when I was the principal. And that ended like the year before I left.
And that's the property that belonged here by the south driveway, right, John, or no?
Uh, no, it's, uh, no, it's the, it's where you go around that new bend down, kind of in the back, that set in the back.
Oh, okay.
That was, that's when we purchased.
That's what, okay.
Yeah. So it doesn't cover what we have, our expenses. It helps. Anybody else? Jerry?
Yeah, Joe, do we, do we charge, do we have like a partial fee?
We do, yeah. We, uh, break down the first, we do is if a kid buys one after the first quarter, we pay a three-quarter price, half-price. Um, we also try to work with people that, that they're struggling and put them on a payment, you know, pay on hand or pay twenty bucks a month, twenty-five dollars a month. Yeah, we do prorate it, uh, as a year, as a year. Because a lot of the, especially the juniors, a lot of them just now starting to turn, you know, um, just getting their license now and starting to drive. So they should pay, you know, they'll pay you whatever portion of the year with the, the driving.
Anybody else?
And as I've said in the past, I could argue both sides of this coin, uh, very easily. But one of the things, uh, you know, I think we should keep in mind is that students are not compelled to drive to school. We do provide public transportation, uh, school transportation. And so, uh, there's always available the opportunity to come by bus if, if the parking fee becomes, uh, something that's not doable for the family, so.
Carlos, did you have something?
I, I mean, I was gonna say just, um, just to kind of mimic, um, that, that the fact that, the climate that we're in regards to our budget situation, maybe the timing just isn't right, um, because of what we're facing, or what we're gonna face. So I think anything that we have right now in regards to fees, we really have to think twice, right, about, about reducing. And it's only, it's not because, I think the students have done great work in coming forth and really sharing, uh, what the, this is the great, this is the process of, of, that we'd like to see students, uh, you know, voice their, their, um, their positions or what they would like to propose. However, also important, it's kind of a learning process also for them to know that our budget situation is one that we have to take serious for those in our, in our towns, so the residents. So I, I would agree that I think right now we'd keep it where it is and we revisit it, uh, when, when the time comes that we can possibly reduce it, but it's, it's a tough time to, to be reducing anything right now, I think.
All right. So then we will leave it as is. All right, thank you, everybody.
John.
Alan.
Oh, sorry, Alan.
We just make some type of commitment to like revisit it in the spring, I think.
Well, I would say revisit it in the summer.
Summer, spring, please.
Yeah.
Like the July meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh huh. Right, 'cause it'll all depend on budget. I mean, at that point, if we're finding out that we're losing a hundred thousand dollars of state funding, you know, we're gonna need to not move on from there, but we can certainly absolutely, can you put that down, Jim?
I do.
Thank you.
I can order.
Uh huh. All right, we will move on to new business and we have a couple of curriculum proposals up for new courses and instructional materials, and this will be our first review. Um, so who's gonna start? Are you using the screen?
I will be using the screen, yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Stolzle. I'm the Secondary Instruction Leader for Science. I'd like to, uh, propose to you tonight a new course offering in anatomy and physiology. Um, I'm excited about this course because it's actually coming from student, uh, student demand. We've, uh, every year have a alumni day in January and one of the things for the last couple of years that I've been getting is feedback is this is one of the weak links that we have in preparing students for, uh, careers in college. So we, uh, sat down over the summer with this vertical team, myself and two of the biology teachers. One of the biology, one teacher is Karen Nappick, who's the primary author for this, and Jen Gampel, who teaches our UConn bio class. We, um, over the summer, took a look at, uh, eight different schools in the area. We've looked at several others, um, since then. We started looking at the comparison to the new next generation science standards to, uh, to see how these courses really start mapping into that. And, uh, and we looked at curricula from a number of different districts to see what looked good to us. Over the last couple of months, we started putting together this initial course sequence and, um, started looking at textbooks and now presented in November to, uh, to the curriculum committee. Some of the things that we saw as we looked around at schools around us is a number of different books that are offered and, uh, courses are done in a whole bunch of different ways, either half-year electives, full-year courses with lab, without lab. And, um, so we kind of looked at what made sense for us based on that and, um, and I'll go through that in a second. One of the other things we did was take a look at the, um, student impact, student inputs by survey. Uh, we had about a hundred and fifty students, uh, juniors and seniors only go in and take a look at a number of different questions. And... Oh, and that's not the one. Um, a number of different questions that we asked them and kind of the summary of what we came up with. If we offered this course, for example, at a college prep level, there's about fifty students that are juniors and seniors that would be interested in that. Um, number of students who are interested if it's only offered at an honors level. Um, there is an AP version of anatomy and physiology. So a lot of interest out there. We want to kind of start and test the waters with just one of those, uh, different flavors. So what we're proposing is, um, a college prep level, full-year course without lab. Primarily because the biggest vocal group of student input that we got came from, uh, a new medical club that's ballooned up this year. A bunch of students got together. There's about fifty members there and, uh, and they really are kind of the core of this. They've driven that club to bring in outside speakers and are really taking a very hands-on approach to it. So we thought a course that kind of tracked along with what they were looking for would be, uh, would be perfect. Lot of interest in, um, physical therapy, physical therapy, occupational therapy, um, dental hygiene, nursing, and, um, we think that this meets the, uh, the district's missions really well to, uh, to provide something that's responsive to students, something that makes them college and career ready and, uh, has a very real-world approach to it. Uh, at the bottom of this slide, I have a Bureau of Labor's labor statistic. Um, there's gonna be, uh, a nineteen percent growth between two thousand fourteen, two thousand twenty-four in the healthcare-related fields as all of us start retiring and need more and more healthcare. So, uh, it's a growth market. It seems to be something that really fits well with, um, both what our students are interested in, but something that's gonna keep them actively engaged, uh, in a career. When we look through, um, kind of scope and sequence for this course, very, um, very systems-based approach in, uh, in the way that we take from basically outside in, but also looking at, um, from simple to complex system. So starting with skeletal bone, muscle, start looking at, um, how the body moves and what kind of, um, problems happen when there are different issues with, uh, muscle systems, for example, and then getting into brain function, like nervous system and, and and there's possible connections there to our, uh, like for example, AP psych course, which also has a strong connection to, uh, right about the same time we'd be getting into this, talking about brain chemistry and disorders. And then kind of ending the year with looking at comparative anatomy. We, we look at dissections of different body tissues from different animals, probably across the year. But, uh, we'd look at either cat, pig, some kind of a, an animal. Uh, they've done frog dissections in Bio One, so this kind of would be a more complex comparative anatomy comparison. And then kind of down to the bottom line, I think for, um, in the number of different books we looked at, I'll pass these two around. We have two, um, two books that seem to really speak to us. One is this, uh, old anatomy and physiology. It's a non-AP version. There's a lab text that goes with it. It would be consumable each year. And then, uh, start down with this end. The, uh, Center for Case Study Teaching in Sciences is a, um, college-level case studies that are provided by the University of Buffalo, kind of this clearinghouse, but comes from a, a number of different universities. And these things are all really great, uh, symptomatic approaches to diagnosing something that's wrong with a system that you're looking at. So for example, here's, um, what I pulled today was on how water can kill you because it unbalances the sodium and potassium ion concentrations in Bio One. They've looked at osmosis and the difference between hypo-hypertonic, um, situations. And this kind of gets into a more practical way of looking at that. So I think the bottom line for all this is about a ten thousand dollar course, um, which would be primarily books. Uh, it's about two-thirds of that cost. And then, uh, I'm sorry, about three-quarters of that cost. And then we also have some, uh, basic supplies that we need to get, things that we don't use in our Bio One course. Some models, like a brain model and, uh, we, we need some skeletons and things like that, plus some specimens to be able to use. And then we'd look at using some equipment that's actually used, um, blood pressure cuffs and pulse oximeters and things like that.
Yeah.
So we can find cats on the road. And pending your questions, that's the course I'm putting to you.
Jim, um, no additional training for staff? You're all currently certified in this?
Uh, so it just requires bio certification for this, but, um, some of the things that we looked at potentially doing that other schools might do is, um, tie this into EMT training. We do not have somebody on staff that's certified for that. We might be able to work out some things. We just started exploring those kind of, um, those, those kind of options.
Right.
Uh, there are some other schools that are actually linked up with hospitals on a very regular basis and students go out there, um, several times a month. We're not kind of thinking that's for the first year of the pilot.
Would this start next year?
Uh, yes, we'd like to offer this as, uh, as one of our next year's offerings.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question was if you were gonna, we could tie it into a EMT or MRT, EMR, I think they're calling it now, course, um, 'cause why should a student have to take it twice? This is probably beyond something that, uh, you'd take at an EMT course, so that would be great. Thank you.
I'm sorry, maybe I missed it. What was the pre-rep set to take this?
Um, because there's a significant amount of biochemistry in here, chemistry and biology one would be the natural progression for this.
Would it be mostly juniors?
Um, since most of the college prep chemistry students are juniors, it's probably mostly seniors. But we'd open it up to juniors as well because we think there's some that would be ready for that or would double, uh, take double down on science that year maybe.
Does it not make sense to have a college prep and honors available to both levels?
It, it would. Um, for the first year, I'd like to kind of test drive it and do what we did with forensics, come back later to ask for another one if this turns out to be wildly successful. Um, I do have data from the student survey that does show there's probably at least one more section of students who'd be interested in taking it, but, um, I'd like to get a solid course off the ground first before we offer it at different levels.
Jim, what's your rough class count on this? What are you anticipating?
I think based on the survey I've got, I've got about fifty kids, two sections of twenty-four, twenty-five, yeah.
I think I, I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate the case studies because making it real for the students is so important. You know, uh, so many times, you know, they're sometimes turned off with texts and textbooks, uh, but these case studies make it real, uh, and, and it just complements the text. So, um, yeah, so I think it's especially the one around energy drinks and the one around brain injury. Um, I think it's great that, that you're including that, so it's...
I believe there's a strong opportunity to connect the community, bringing in other healthcare professionals from time to time throughout this course, so. Then we've got a very different science course than anything we're offering now.
I know, this is great. I'm an occupational therapist and my daughter wants to be a nurse and she's like, I'm so mad that, you know, 'cause she's a senior, that they're not, you know, she can't take it, but just being in, you know, taking all those classes in college, like this will be a great opportunity for them just to get, you know, basic knowledge before they take these classes. So I'm very excited about this.
Yeah. It, it could rule, rule it in or rule it out as a, as a profession before they're spending the college.
Right, absolutely. Don't know pretty much.
Um, one question about books. Is it practical, impractical, less expensive, more expensive, um, to put online, purchase online books versus a hard copy?
They're, um, so it's about a six-year payback period. So if we can get more than six years out of the hard books, we actually do better.
Publishers have not figured out how to do pricing for online tests.
I wish they would, 'cause I can't lift my daughter's backpack, which she carries around all day, every day.
It, it seems to me, you know, when you look at the cost of a, the cost of a textbook today, most of the profits made or most of the money spent in textbook production is in the delivery of textbooks, believe it or not. It's the transportation of textbooks from the, from the printer to the marketplace, okay? And when you think of all that money, suddenly it would not have to be spent if you went digital on these things and they still can't figure it out.
Right. I'm excited. I think you, it's like, sounds like a good class.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, it was a great job, Jim. Thank you.
All right, we will move on. Thank you so much. Who's up next? Chair.
Well, that's a great introduction to my request for a new textbook.
Uh, my name's Ian Lowell. Hello, for those of you who don't know me, I'm an instructional leader for history and social studies. I, uh, pass these around now. The textbook seconds is a great dumbbell. In weight. We're in a situation now where we've kind of gotten to the point where our current AP psychology textbook is presenting inaccurate information. And up to a point, you can supplement with other material and we've kind of gotten to that point now where our current textbook is more or less obsolete and we need to purchase a new textbook. Let me explain to you why, uh, through this presentation. First of all, uh, you know, AP psychology is the most popular course at MASC in terms of AP courses. Over the last two years, we've serviced over two hundred and fifteen students. Every year we have anywhere between four and six sections of AP psychology. Uh, our pass rate is, is excellent for that course. And for a lot of kids, AP psychology may be the only AP class that they take at MASC High School. And so it's, it's a course that really opens up that AP, uh, to a lot of students. And there's been much research done about how taking AP classes in your high school career, whether you pass that exam or you don't pass that exam, still has a positive effect on your performance when you get to, when you get to college. Your learning expectations for, for college-level courses. And so that's a, AP psychology fits a, a very important, uh, piece, I think, in the, in the overall MASC curriculum. Uh, a couple of years ago, the DSM or the Diagnostic Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders changed. Every ten to fifteen years, they change this, this manual. And this is basically how, uh, mental disorders are classified. Our old textbook, of course, follows the DSM four. This new textbook would follow the DSM five. And it's not just a matter of certain lingo changing. Uh, you know, I give the example here, the Asperger's syndrome is no longer in the DSM five. It is now part of the autism spectrum as a, for instance. But there's an entire way of classifying mental disorders. There's a, this axis system that they used, this four-point diagnostic process that is no longer used at all. Uh, they did away with the entire thing in the DSM five and they've changed a, a lot of different...
of different ways of, uh, of identifying, uh, mental disorders. And so when we're using a textbook that uses the old DSM, it's not really, uh, it's not accurate. The new, uh, the new textbook, of course, is updated to the DSM five. Not only that, it's also aligned directly to the AP course. It is the only textbook that is specifically designed for AP psychology courses that's available. There are college-level psychology textbooks that of course would work and would fit, the difference being that this textbook actually has specific sample questions within the text and at the end of every chapter. It highlights key academic vocabulary that's emphasized within the course. So this is, this is a, a study guide in a textbook, kind of all in one. That's not to say that it's only a high school textbook, though. This, this textbook is used, uh, in several colleges as well. Again, in looking at other textbooks, uh, if you go on the College Board website and you check out their sample syllabi, uh, out of the eight samples they have there, six of them use the textbook that I'm passing around. Those that don't give reasons for why they chose to go with a different textbook. So this is, this is more or less the accepted textbook for all AP psychology courses. In calling neighboring schools and, uh, in the area at SWC, they're basically all using the Myers Psychology textbook for AP. It is also what we've been using, we've been using a Myers textbook, so the transition for teachers is not difficult. It's also the cheaper option in terms of, uh, budget. It's thirty dollars less, uh, than the other textbooks. At minimum, some textbooks, it's even fifty dollars less. In terms of the online version, I know, uh, you know, Mr. Ferris, you talked about the online version and as you're feeling the heftiness of the book.
Yeah.
Yeah. What they've done here is they've made the online version of this textbook, uh, within fifteen dollars price, but it has a time limit on it. And so it's got an eight-year site license. At the end of eight years, you have no textbooks. So whether you're ready to purchase new textbooks or not, you have, you have none. And so, in terms of our usage, this is our eighth year currently using our, our current textbook and we used that for several years before that too. I would expect the life of a textbook to be somewhere in the ten to fifteen-year range. That's why the online text doesn't really save us any money because, again, it, it disappears when, when our site license is. It does come with a cost, though, uh, and, you know, in terms of college-level texts, we see this, uh, I saw this a couple of years back when we got large enrollments in UConn World History, we had to go out and buy these books. They aren't inexpensive. A hundred and twenty-four dollars and nine cents per book. We're estimating that we would need a hundred of those textbooks, which when combined with our shipping costs, uh, leads us to the thirteen thousand six range. With that, we are, we get all of the ancillary resources that are, uh, come with textbooks in terms of question banks and formative assessments, PowerPoints, the, the interactive online, uh, like brains and that kinda stuff that are all in our interactive models, flip video lessons. Are you familiar with the flip video model where it's kinda like an online lecture that students will watch at home, come into class and they'll be able to do more inquiry-based learning and instruction there? So it's a, it's a really good resource. It does come with a price. I think, you know, we have to balance, especially as we talk about budgets tonight, you know, we balance the mission and the goal and the purpose of us being here with getting our students, uh, you know, what they need to learn with our fiduciary responsibilities to the town and taxpayers. That said, I think we've kind of hit a wall with our current textbook. I've always, you know, been very mindful of the cost and the price. I checked to make sure that this was the most recent edition, there was not gonna be another edition coming out in a year or two, there was no DSM on the horizon to come out in three years and we were gonna have to replace those. This seems to be the book that will last us through, uh, you know, the next decade. So, it does come with a price, but I think it's, in my estimation, and, you know, I'm relying on the AP psychology teachers as well in the course, the AP test has begun to change to reflect the new DSM and our current text does not. So that's where we're at.
I will point out that both resources in the new course, uh, tonight's presentations are in.
Questions? Alan?
Yeah.
That's for an AP course?
This is an AP course, AP psychology, yes.
And that was.
That's not, that's not the cost for the course, that's just the cost for the text.
And you looked at other textbooks?
I did, yes.
Like?
This is, this is the thirty-dollar cheaper textbook. I wish, I know, it's shocking. I wish, but quite honestly, when we look at, when I bought the, when I bought UConn World History textbooks, probably eight years ago, they were a hundred and twelve dollars apiece. It's part of the fee and the cost that comes with the College Board AP kinda texts.
Yeah, I mean, it's very generic.
The textbook, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, you have to have an AP-approved textbook for the course. It seems to have worked pretty well, the previous version. We use, currently we use Myers Psychology Eighth Edition. It's not Myers for AP, it's just Myers Psychology Eighth Edition. And again, our, our results with the students have been, have been good. I, I wish I could say I was expert enough to comment on the detail of the psychology book. Psychology is not my, my particular field of expertise, but I would say that it's been, it's been received well by teachers and students and it's been effective.
Okay.
I wanted just to add that you also, the students have the DSM?
Yeah, I mean, we purchased, uh, advanced copies in the meantime for this year's, this year's exam. We purchased eight different, uh, copies for students to reference the new DSM in class, exactly.
Why do the students need the DSM?
It's required for a lot of the free response questions that they're asked to perform on the AP test, that they need to be able to diagnose and be able to kind of, they use, use the academic vocabulary that's located within the DSM. Again, this, this textbook incorporates that within it. Right now, we're supplementing. But we've gotten to that point where it's, it's almost, it reminds me of a conversation we, we had, I don't know if anybody was on the board at that time, but about eight to ten years ago, we had a conversation about textbooks that were being used in the elementary schools that still had East and West Germany and the USSR on the maps and, you know, this came up and we said, "Okay, well, you know, we've hit a point where we need to get a new textbook." This is, we've kind of hit that point with the AP psychology textbook. Again, it may not be revolutionary, but I, I don't want a resource going home to students that has inaccurate information that's gonna then lead them to perform negatively on an AP test.
Anybody have anything else? David?
Jim, what do we do with all the old books? I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping up to date, I think it's phenomenal, but.
You know, historically, we would always try to find districts that might wanna take old books. Typically, though, we've exhausted the books by that point.
Right.
And so they're, they're.
So you don't wanna pass on something with inadequate information onto another school district?
Yeah, not all the textbooks are always like, you know, sometimes they're a bit out of date, but not as, you know, this is, this is really because it's a College Board AP test course, too. You know, for our, for our traditional semester psychology course, big picture kinda stuff, I think it's, it's somewhat of a different call when we're talking about the AP test reflecting the new DSM. We wanna make sure that kids are able to answer test questions accurately.
And any book that's, uh, we're not using anymore, it goes to the policy committee for them to review and what we do with it after that.
Great, thanks. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And is that it? Okay.
You saw it?
All right. Thank you. Do I have anything else or any other questions or anything to cover, um, that anybody wants to bring up before we move to adjournment, 'cause that's all that's left?
Merry Christmas.
I'd like to say, I'd like to say we won't see you before the holidays. I'd like to wish all the board members and our staff that's here this evening, uh, happy holidays, a good rest over the, over the break and look forward to seeing you again in January.
Same to you.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Thank you, second, George. All in favor? Motion passes, Alan, raise your hand.